Greetings, everybody. Good evening. It's seven o'clock on Monday, today, August 12th, 2024, and welcome to the City Council meeting. My name is Wei Tai Kwak. I'm the Vice Mayor, standing in for our Mayor Gina Dawson, who is out sick today. Now, let's do the roll call. And Councilmember McCormick?
Present.
Councilmember Candell?
Present.
Councilmember Anduri?
Present.
And myself. So there are four of us present and one absent. Thank you. We'll go to item number four on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any members of the public or the council that would like to make any changes to the agenda? If not, a motion?
I'll move it up.
Action of the agenda?
A second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero, one, in favor. Now, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Our next item on the agenda is a tradition we started this year. At the first meeting of each month, we read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Lafayette is part of the unceded ancestral homeland of the Bay Miwok people. The Bay Miwok and neighboring Aloney people have lived in and moved through this place for thousands of years. They steward it and shaped this land for hundreds of generations. We express our appreciation and gratitude for this profound legacy, which enhances and contributes to our lives to this day. We will strive to honor this land and strengthen our ties with the indigenous communities that continue to live and work in our East Bay region as our neighbors and community members. We acknowledge and honor them and their ancestors, elders, and next seven generations. Let's go to item seven on our agenda, which is public comments. These would be for items not on the agenda, and we invite members of the public to share up to three minutes. And so are there members in the audience that are, have submitted slips, speaking slips?
Yes, Vice Mayor Kwak, we will take persons in the meeting hall first, and I will call your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. Shane Reisman.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. My name is Shane Reisman. I have met, I think, everybody up here. We've worked together. I'm on the Parks Commission here in Lafayette on the Park Trails and Racks Commission. I've worked on some great park projects here in Lafayette. I think some of you are familiar with some of them. Maybe they fit on your agenda, like the 221 Lafayette Circle. I'm working with Mary McCosker, the Historical Society, on some trail, new trail signs. I've worked and secured letters of approval from some of you for a California State Parks Grant for Lee Creekside. So I'm very involved in lots of park projects here, and I'm running for East Bay Parks. So I'll appear on the ballot as Parks, City of Lafayette Parks Commissioner. So for those of you who know me, I would say that there's no one who's better able to represent the needs of Lafayette and La Miranda that's participating in this race, and there's no one who's got the kind of experience that I have expanding access to parks. So for anybody who's considering possibly giving an endorsement in the race who hasn't already, I've reached out, I think, to you all individually, but I'll follow up with you. And I thank you for your time. That's my statement.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Stella Wooderspoon.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to make a shout out to the Public Works and Engineering Department for an incredible amount of work that they did this summer. In particular, I want to call out the work they did at the school sites at Akalani's in Spring Hill. Those are the ones that I saw. They may have had some other sites that they were tending to, but they've kind of, I think, gotten mostly complete with the safety around schools projects. And it's just great because the timing couldn't be better. Tomorrow is the first day of school, and today, a lot of kids were on the campuses for the mascot days to get their schedules and get ready. So yay to Public Works and Engineering. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Stella, for noticing, and thank you to the staff.
Next speaker, Carol Marota.
Good evening. I'm going to take my mask off. My name is Carol Marota. I am a Lafayette resident. I live at 3365 McGraw Lane, but I'm actually here speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley. And what I'd like to do is read a letter of endorsement. The board voted, and I'm just going to read the letter, the body of the letter. It says, "The League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley, LWVDV, understands the City of Lafayette will put a half-cent sales tax measure on the November 5th, 2024 ballot. LWVDV supports the City of Lafayette's half-cent sales tax measure. LWVDV finds this measure a thoughtful solution to the City of Lafayette's projected budget deficit. The revenue generated will go into the city's general fund. This money will preserve the city's current programs. LWVDV likes that the City of Lafayette will establish a citizens committee with oversight and sunsets this sales tax in seven years. In keeping with the League of Women Voters principles regarding transparency, we note the City Council established a two-person fiscal responsibility committee who met with staff to examine the budget, assessed options, and reported to the City Council for a year. Public comments were taken at every meeting. The city finances were available via their website, and we applaud the city's observing the Brown Act and their efforts to keep the public informed. The League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley finds this measure in compliance with the state position on state and local finances and endorses this Lafayette half-cent sales tax measure, and it's signed by our President Mary Schreiber."
Thank you very much, Ms. Marota, for attending and for that endorsement. Are there any questions from Council?
Just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There are no more speaker slips for persons in the hall, so I'll go to those in our virtual audience, and we have Mike Hayes.
Welcome, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Lafayette City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Mike Hayes, and I'm here to continue to propose the formation of a committee or commission dedicated to AI media marketing literacy for the benefit of all Lafayette citizens. As we are all aware, artificial intelligence is rapidly transforming various aspects of our lives, including how we consume and interpret media. It is crucial that our community stays informed and prepared to navigate these changes. This is not just a matter of staying current with technology, but ensuring that all citizens, regardless of age, have the tools and understanding to critically engage with AI-driven media. I am pleased to inform you that the League of Women Voters is hosting an excellent presentation on this very topic at our local library. This event, scheduled for Thursday, August 22nd, has already sold out, highlighting the strong interest and need for such education within our community. This overwhelming response underscores the importance of establishing a dedicated body to focus on AI media literacy. By forming a committee or commission, Lafayette can take a proactive step to educate and empower its citizens, ensuring that we are all equipped to handle the implications of AI in the media. This initiative will not only benefit individual citizens, but also strengthen our community as a whole by fostering informed and engaged residents. I urge the City Council to consider this proposal seriously and take in action to support the development of AI media marketing literacy programs. Together, we can ensure that Lafayette remains a forward-thinking and well-prepared community in the face of technological advancements. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm professional broadcaster Mike Hayes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hayes.
Vice Mayor Kwak, I have no additional speakers at this time.
All right. Well, thank you very much, everybody who spoke. Item eight on the agenda is the City Manager's Update.
Good evening, City Council and members of the public. This is a update on the work conducted by all our city departments. From the Police Department, National Night Out was held on August 6th, was hosted at the library, and in partnership with Confire, we are now discussing ways to engage the public more in this very important night and encourage young families and all community members to attend. It's very informative. Our Emergency Preparedness and Crime Prevention Commissioners were there to assist in this event. The Police Department will be hosting the ever-popular Fall Citizens Academy, starting in October. If you want to know how the department functions and really get a deep dive into policing, please sign up. It's open to anyone. There's an application form on the website, and it's six weeks of really good training and exposure to the workings of the Police Department. From Engineering, CCTA's consultants have started the Smart Signals project design, and throughout this coming week, you will see consultants opening our utility boxes to verify what kind of equipment we have so that they can upgrade all of them in a consistent manner. The Flashing Beacon Crossing has been added to the Raised Crosswalk at Stanley adjacent to Akalani's High School, and we have installed the Reduced Speed School Zones around all our schools, and also the Reduced Speed Limit signs for eight segments of Lafayette that were approved by the City Council. As an example, the speed limit on Deer Hill has gone down from 35 to 30 miles an hour, and I just encourage everyone to keep an eye out for these new reduced speed limits. The city has received a number of calls and questions about the litigation associated with what's called the dips, or the pathway that connects the Happy Valley Glen neighborhood with Happy Valley Road. The City Attorney's Office is preparing a statement, and it will be shared with the neighbors and the general public and the council, of course. And finally, City Clerk Robbins informs me that the city's sales tax measure on the November ballot has been assigned a letter. It's letter H. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you very much, City Manager Shavatsa. Any questions from the Council?
I do. Thank you, and thank you for preparing something for the people in Happy Valley Glen. About when might that be done?
It should be this week, if not early this week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, we'll move to item number nine on the agenda, our presentations, where Tracy Robinson, our Administrative Services Director, will introduce a new administrative intern.
Okay, Elena, I want to stand at the podium. So, members of the Council, I want to introduce Elena Brown. She's been working with us in administration as an intern this summer. Elena was born and raised in Lafayette. She's currently a junior at the University of Oregon studying environmental studies with a minor in public policy and planning. With her free time, she loves to hike and be outdoors, and we're very excited to have her be an intern. She's gotten an exposure to quite a few things. She's worked with planning on some projects. She's been doing some social media for us. She's been doing the very exciting task of helping us catch up on some filing, which is, it's boring but necessary, but Elena's been really great to have, so we welcome her. She'll be here probably till about the middle of September.
Welcome. How's your internship going?
It's going well. It's been a really great opportunity so far, and I'm looking forward to spending the rest of my summer with Lafayette. So, thank you.
Great. Well, we're glad that you have the opportunity to do the internship and learn about planning and environmental studies major. That's very helpful, too. So I hope you'll take an interest and make the best of this great opportunity. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Let's go to item number 10. This will be a joint session of the City Council and our Planning Commission, and it will be led by Arlie Cassidy, our senior planner. So could please invite members of our Planning Commission to come up, pull up a chair if necessary? Greetings. Greetings, Chair Labonge, and we have Vice Chair Radenich and Christina Stern, a member also. Okay.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council, Chair Labonge, and Planning Commissioner.
Maybe just a little closer to the microphone, please.
Thank you all for being here tonight. As you know, my name is Arlie Cassidy. I want to reintroduce our consultant, Heather Coleman of City Context, who will be presenting with me tonight. As you know, tonight's presentation is on the Tree Protection Ordinance Update. This is our second joint meeting with both the Council and the Planning Commission, this time focused on alternatives. We are presenting policy options for you to choose from, which will then inform our draft ordinance, which will return back for your review in the fall. So I wanted to start with a reminder of why we're here. There are known issues for both the staff and applicants for tree permits to our current tree protection ordinance, including a lack of clarity in our regulations and a lack of objective standards, permits that are required for desirable actions, such as removing dead trees, and we've heard that there are burdensome replacement tree requirements. We also are aware of changing conditions in our environment, wildfires, climate change, and of course, we're hearing a lot about insurance requirements changing. Added to this, we have the safety element, which was updated last year, which does have a policy calling for the update of this ordinance. A refresher on our timeline. We had that project kickoff back in April. Since then, we've been focused on community engagement and research and analysis, and now we're returning in August for this Alternatives meeting. Once we have your feedback, we'll go into developing that draft ordinance and then hope to return in the fall for hearings and hopefully adoption. Since we last met, we've been busy with outreach, review, and learning. I do want to call out a few items here, including the survey, which was available through most of the month of May. We had a robust response with 280 participants after sending an email to every email we had for every applicant ever. We did a lot of research and outreach there. We also want to call out that we've reviewed not only the city's own policies and plans, of course, our own ordinance, other cities' tree protection ordinances. We've also done a deep dive into 10 years of data on all of our past tree permits to understand what they actually permitted. So some of that data scattered through the staff report. And then finally, of great value, were the interviews that we conducted with stakeholders and three experts, all through the UC Extension Program, which had a lot of good information for us to learn. Before we dive into the themes of tonight's presentation, we want to give you some context. We learned a lot as we did this research, and we want to share that with you to help understand where our recommendations are coming from. So first is canopy cover. Canopy cover in the city has changed pretty drastically over the last 20 years during the time of the tree protection ordinance's existence. Back in 2001, and I should start by saying actually that we used a software tool for estimating this canopy coverage. This is not an exact number. We used Google Earth photos through iTool Canopy, which was a software tool recommended to us by one of the experts we spoke with. And so using those Google Earth images, the estimates show that back in 2001, we were down in the low 30s, 31%. In 10 years, we grew to 41%, and by 2021, the imagery was showing 59% canopy coverage. So clearly, our canopy coverage is growing, even if these numbers have a little bit of, you know, room for error. In that time, the total number of replacement trees that were planted in those 20 years, or excuse me, in the last 10 years, I apologize, were half of what would be required if the tree protection ordinance had been implemented strictly. So as you know, we've mentioned, we want objective standards. There's currently discretion to kind of change what's planted based on the situation on the ground. And so the tree protection ordinance called for 8,000 replacement trees to be planted. Instead, only 4,000 were planted, and still, our canopy cover grew with these numbers. So that's some good context to understand that we're doing quite well with canopy coverage. Second, I want to talk about wildfire risk. Obviously, this is a hot topic for many people. We are learning a lot about defensible space regulations. They are evolving quickly. There is legislation in the state that is changing and coming our way. We learned a lot about this defensible space and how our understanding of wildfire is changing based on primarily the paths of wildfire. That's kind of the phrase that was used by a lot of our experts. That's kind of the phrase that was used by a lot of our experts. These three paths are described as direct flame, radiant heat, and wind-blown embers. And I'm going to get into this a little more in a moment. But this matters because it also ties into how, where fires start and the relationship between structures and trees. A lot of people are worried about wildfire and trees being on their land or close to their homes, and so, we want to shed some light on why that matters or what direction it matters in. So, let me just go to our next slide. So, I'm going to show a few images here and go a little bit deeper into some of these concepts to help frame why our recommendations are what they are. So, this image, and I'm going to go through each of them one by one, shows those three paths I just mentioned. How can a wildfire or fire move across space? In this image, we're seeing direct flame. There's a path of vegetation, the flame is moving across it, it reaches the home, and the home catches on fire. In this, we're seeing radiant heat. The shed or outbuilding is on fire. It's hot enough to catch the home on fire, or in some cases, the home does not have home hardening techniques. So, this is maybe a single pane, untempered glass. It breaks easily under the heat, and the fire enters the home. And third, wind-blown embers. This is showing embers that from a fire somewhere else that are blowing across the property, getting caught against the home, and then lighting the home on fire. And what we learned from all three experts we spoke to is that this is really the focus, this is what they've learned, is now the primary way that wildfires traveling. 80 to 90% of structure fires are started from wind-blown embers. So, this really changes how we look at what should be around a home. And it gets into Zone Zero, which you probably read about in our staff report. Zone Zero is a proposed five-foot buffer with no combustible materials surrounding all structures. So, if I jump back one image to this radiant heat, you can see that five-foot buffer shown on this house. There's five-foot, probably concrete in this image around the entire house. And that's going to help embers not catch the house on fire as they get caught against the house, because there's nothing to catch on fire at the base of the house. And so, to show some examples of how Zone Zero works, this is obviously an experiment, two equal sheds. They've blown embers at them. One has caught on fire. The fence has carried the fire. And where Zone Zero begins with a metal fence and concrete, the fire cannot travel across it. So, this is, obviously, direct flame is traveling, but the same would be true of any fire that starts. It cannot cross into the Zone Zero very handily. And Zone Zero does not have to be kind of a concrete pool around all structures. It doesn't have to be a super-hard field. It can be gravel, anything that's non-combustible. So, here's one image, and then another, you know, it can be quite beautiful. The potted plants are allowed within Zone Zero, well-irrigated, small items, but primarily, we're looking at rock or concrete around the house for five feet. That is what Zone Zero is. Okay, so, and then I want to return to the concept of trees and why they matter or don't matter. So, in our interview with three experts from UC Extension, the consistent message was that trees rarely catch on fire and cause the house to catch on fire. They really transmit the fire to the house. This is partly because there would that is filled with water. They can actually, they're learning now, they can direct water to a limb that's on fire and kind of help extinguish it. So, they're rarely the cause of a home fire. On the other hand, the house is also often wood, but completely dried out. And when a house catches on fire first, it will burn and then leave trees that are singed or damaged, but rarely totally destroyed. And so, we can look at evidence of remainders of fires and see what happened. And that's what these images show. This is the campfire, and you can see that this fire did not burn the whole forest. It did not come as a wall through the forest and burn all the houses along the way. The fire did not come from the trees. It came likely from embers, caught the houses on fire, and singed a lot of the trees around them. Some of these trees even look pretty good. They're not doing so bad. Maybe their leaves burned. So, the same fire, there's islands of trees that did not burn. And this is an older photo from Los Angeles, which shows not only the spottiness, you know, the remainder of trees, but also the spottiness of the fire itself. Some homes remain, were completely unburned or damaged. So, this is embers jumping great distances sometimes and catching where there's material to burn. So, we wanted to provide you with this context because we really focused in the staff report on Zone Zero and defensible space. And this is why. This is the fire science we learned that's evolving and the rules that we should keep up with. Thank you for letting me indulge in that section there. So, at this time, I'm going to turn over our presentation to Heather Coleman, who's going to talk about the main themes of our recommendation. I do want to note that we will not be going through each topic from the staff report in our presentation tonight, now. We do have slides for each topic to present as you're discussing it later on, but we do have a link to the staff report online if anyone wants to follow along with more detail for our recommendations and alternatives. And with that, I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Thanks, Arlie. So, as we were looking over our recommendations, we realized that they could be grouped into four main themes. Protected trees, in other words, which trees are protected under the ordinance, replacement trees, fire, and procedures. So, these are the staff report topics numbered as they are in the staff report for easier navigation and grouped under these four main themes. So, under the theme of protected trees, we recommend continuing to emphasize protection of native species and large mature trees while refining the lists of protected species to reflect flammability concerns. Under the theme of protected trees, we have size and species criteria, trees that are shown on approved development plans, and street trees, in other words, trees in the right-of-way. Under the theme of replacement trees, we recommend refining the replacement planting requirements so that there will be appropriate spacing and to foster healthy tree growth, more feasibly fit trees on site, and be fair and consistent. So, under that theme, we have the topics of the number and size of replacement trees, objective standards for reducing requirements, replacement species, and location of replacement trees and in-loo fees. Under the topics of fire, well, the recommendation is to make it easier for property owners to remove trees for defensible space purposes, and then align the tree regulations with the vegetation management strategies for the different defensible space zones, and make it easier for owners to remove dead trees. So, the fire risk and vegetation management topic has to do with defensible space, like Arlie was just talking about, and then dead trees is its own topic. Finally, we have a set of topics related to procedures. We recommend establishing clear and objective standards, minimizing the number of discretionary decisions, and deterring illegal tree removal. So, there's a topic on tree removal for safety and what the procedures are for that, and there's a topic on penalties for violation. So, in the staff report and in our more detailed slides, which we can pull up as needed during the discussion, we just wanted to point out that we have a set of staff recommendations under each topic, and we also have a set of alternatives. These alternatives, sometimes they are additional options that are in addition to the recommendation, and sometimes they are instead of. So, we just want to point out that they're not necessarily mutually exclusive. So, the questions that we have for the council and PC tonight and Planning Commission tonight are, for each of the topics presented in the discussion section of the staff report, do you agree with the staff recommendation? Or do you instead support one of the alternatives listed or another alternative that's not mentioned? Number two, do you need further research or analysis on any of the topics in the staff report or any additional topics? So, that concludes our presentation, and we can now take questions.
Very good. Thank you for the report. Why don't we, would the Planning Commission like to ask questions first, and then I'll ask the council members second?
Just a procedural question, because we are going to go through each one, right? Okay. So, I'm going to save till just more specific, and I think that's it for the Planning Commission. Vice Mayor.
All right. Very good. How about council members McCormick, and then we'll go with Endury?
First off, I know we're just in the question period, but I do want to commend staff and the consultant for the staff report. It was just phenomenal. I mean, it's a really complicated topic. I had no idea we had this many aspects, and you really helped kind of synthesize down to what we needed to study and do that, so I appreciate that. A couple of broad questions. I know we're going to talk about specifics. I think Chairman Labange is correct, probably is worth waiting. But you talked about the canopy coverage, and it was mentioned a couple of times. Is there a desired number? I mean, it's hard to evaluate. Generally speaking, port trees seem good, and I agree, but it's like, are we shooting for something, or what's the barrier there?
There is no specific canopy coverage goal that we found in any of our guiding documents. So, the open space element does not have a canopy coverage number. The Tree Protection Ordinance doesn't have a number. We would suggest not including that discussion in this scope, but that when the open space element is next updated, it might be something that could be improved or added to that element. It is useful to have a goal. It's something that can be discussed loosely in the context of this discussion, but it does not necessarily belong in the Tree Protection Ordinance.
Thank you. All right. I have a few other questions, but they're more appropriate, I think, for the individual topics, so.
All right. Councilmember Endury.
Well, I just want to agree with Councilmember McCormick. This was an exceptional staff report. All the work that went into gathering the information, and then the way it was presented to us, it was almost too easy to go through it and understand. It was just a great staff report, so thank you very much. And my question is in the same area. On the tree canopy, I mean, it just strikes me as incredible, in all senses of the word, that our tree canopy would go from 31% 20 years ago to 59% now. How confident are you in that 59% number?
I am not at all confident that it is 59%. I am very confident that it's gone up significantly. So, it's a software that makes assumptions about what shapes are. So, it's looking at blobs on the satellite image, and it's assuming that something is a tree. So, we had our intern verify, I think, 200 dots about whether they were trees or not. We didn't go too much deeper than that, but we wanted to just, it helps it learn what certain shapes look like. If a blob is round, it's a tree. If it's square, it's a house. So, it's learning as you verify. So, I would not at all swear that it is exactly 59%. I think it's very likely that it's above 50, and very likely that the previous numbers were in the 25 to 35 range.
Yeah. And if it is above 50, that's a very high number for a municipality.
And the county average is around 31%, and that is from a publication, I apologize, I'm forgetting who it's from, very trustworthy source, I will pull that up, but it's from a publication that we referenced in our staff report.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, again, fantastic report. So, we had a letter in from Will Elder about including the several invasive tree species. Is that possible to include that in this ordinance at some point?
Our recommendation would be to reference lists.
Cross-reference it.
With the ordinance so that we can update those lists without updating the ordinance.
Okay.
But yes, we can look at adding those to any list that we include.
Thank you.
And I have a follow-up question on the canopy question. There was a member of the public from Save Lafayette Trees who commented that maybe the, I mean, first of all, it is unbelievable about the, in the decade that we went from up to 59% from the 30-some percent. And was that, could that be seasonal variation? Was one of the maps taken in the wintertime versus the summertime? And was the intern looking at the same time of year or the same month when you compared 2011 to 2021?
She was not, and we did not have those photos available. So, it is quite possible that there is some variation in the numbers due to seasonality. We had, we used what we had available. Google typically, or Google Earth typically has one image per year in, kind of the older, the farther back you go, the fewer images there are. The farthest back we found was 1939, which we did include in the staff report as an image, which was equally in the low 30s. So, things have kind of oscillated back and forth a bit. But no, we cannot account for season or choose our seasons very well when we're doing this calculation. It was more meant to just provide a general benchmark that canopy is increasing.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Any more questions? None from, all right. In that case, why don't we open it up to public comment? If there are members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please put a yellow slip to our clerk. And if there are members of the, go ahead.
Okay. The City Council is taking comments on the tree item, item 10A. I'll take speakers in the Community Hall first, and then we'll go to the persons online. David Clark.
I'm Dave Clark. I'm the Vice Chair of the Creeks Committee, and the Creeks Committee does have an interest in this project. There's not a reference in the staff report to the Downtown Creeks Plan. So, I don't know if you've looked at that specifically or not, but it's not a reference. So, I'll assume that you've not. And there's some history behind the Downtown Creeks Plan. Actually, the full title was the Downtown Creeks Preservation, Restoration, and Development Plan was adopted by the City Council in October of 2017. Part of what was included in that plan were statutory references in an appendix in the back, including changes that would need to be made to existing ordinances, in this case, the Tree Protection Ordinance. So, that also exists. And I've got a copy, I'd be happy to provide it to you. Subsequent to the adoption of the plan in 2017, we've spent, the committee has spent a lot of time, not so much on a Tree Protection Ordinance, but certainly on the entire, what was it, storm management, the creek setback, that section. But one of the things that we did do, we appointed a task force, which was Will Elder, Jeff Gilman, myself, and Matt Luttrell was the staff coordinator. And we went through the tree, we went through all those ordinances, but the Tree Protection Ordinance, and drafted language, specific language, cross-throughs and underlines to be, to implement what the policies that were adopted in Downtown Creeks Plan were. I've also got that. We've got a working, we have a working document with that strike through. I'd be happy to provide that to you, because it's probably a leg up, so you don't have to redo the work. So, and however you want that, I can hand you a paper copy or send it to you, but I don't, what Will's letter, Councilmember Candell, I'm not sure that I understood the response about a cross-reference to take care, what he's, what, the point of his letter is to include those invasive species so that they can be removed. It's including them for, so they can be not replaced or removed. So, I'm not sure that we can do that absent implementing the statutory language that we had previously suggested. They're not huge changes. It's the addition of a separate subsection that basically says, these, we would do two things. One, define what the invasive species was in the definition section, include those items that Will has listed there, and then there'd be a subsequent section which, in the exception section, which would allow, which would give the city the authority to either remove those or not replace them when they can. There are a couple of additional changes. It's not, not many, but there's, it's not only or solely the items that Will raised in that letter, but I would invite you to take a look at what we did in the past and consider incorporating it, because we have done that work. And that was, we were an assigned task force of the Creeks Committee, and most of that was renewed by the legal department. So, I think, I think it was a, it's not easy saying it.
All right. Thank you for wrapping up. Thank you.
It played music. If you hear the music go, your time up. It wasn't just a little ding.
It was a form of applause, a new form. All right. Thank you very much, David.
Vice Mayor Quoc, I have no additional speaker slips for persons in the Don Tatson Community Hall, and I see no hands raised in our.
Oh, we have one more.
Erling Horn, if you would come to the podium, please.
Erling Horn, Windsor Drive, Lafayette, California.
Welcome.
I did not hear a reference to the Downtown Street Improvement Master Plan that this city adopted in 1988, which although has limited fire focus, does specify prespacing, species, and all the rest of it. And we've been, we've adopted that plan. And we've been, we've adopted that plan again in 1988 and been following the recommendations. And as you can see, we have changed Mount Apple Boulevard from a strip of bacon to something that's 59% covered by tree foliage during the summer. But anyway, I think that you should take a look at that downtown plan and see how it can be incorporated into this new ordinance that you're, that you're considering. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Sorry, I didn't run into the music.
Or the planning commission? Thank you.
Vice Mayor Quoc, I have no additional speaker slips, and I have no hands raised in our virtual audience.
All right. Thank you very much, then. We'll go to the next segment, which would be for staff to lead us in a discussion of the four themes and 11 questions. Is that, is that the next step? Okay. Go ahead.
So as we mentioned earlier, we were not planning to go through each recommendation. The staff report details all the research we did, the recommendations that we've made, and the other alternatives that are also possibilities. We do have a slide for each of those recommendations, but we're not planning to talk about them in detail more to have a slide available as you form your discussion. So this is the first slide. These are obviously are a summary. They do not have as many words as all of our in-depth recommendations, but hopefully help you track what the recommendations and alternatives are for each item. Please let us know if you would like us to present more information for each item.
Okay. So the way we'll do this then is you're, you're gonna present the slide on number one here, and then I would invite members of the planning commission and then the council to offer comments, questions, suggestions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Quoc. I do know that Commissioner Heising has provided written comments. He wasn't able to be here, which staff has. So we're not gonna introduce those into the meeting. Staff has those and they'll, and I assume those will become public at some point, however his notes. So I will confer with my colleagues up here. I do not have any on this specific issue.
I guess, so if we like an alternative, now would be the time to let you know that we personally like one of the alternatives?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. I personally like protect additional oak species.
So maybe I'll just add something. I, the way I took this is we would, I, I kind of went through and marked off on the, on the recommended, you know, if there were four things I'd mark, check, check, check if I liked them, and then an alternative. I, and I'm assuming it's not an all or none, so we can kind of piecemeal, just like that was, I was thinking. So if that's all right, are you good with that kind of process?
That's just fine. If it helps, I don't mean to frame it in a negative, but we can also frame it as, do you disagree with the recommendation or have anything to add?
Okay. In this case, there's under item 1.4, there are two bullet points with recommendations, right? So that I think we could say we, you agree or disagree with the recommendations. In this case, Vice Chair Radnich has looked at 1.5. There's the first bullet point, which adds other oaks, such as cork oaks, blue oaks, and black oaks to the list of protected species. So that's, that's the ask, right? That you're in support of the alternative or the addition of that bullet. Councilmember Endury.
I have a clarification question on that because it appears to me that blue oaks and black oaks are covered. You're not giving the, you know, the scientific terms here, but they are on the list of protected trees. So why would we, cork oaks I don't see on the list already, but aren't blue oaks and black oaks already there?
I believe they are on the riparian species list. I would have to check, but perhaps there was a mistype.
No, I think they're on the main list.
You're right. You're right. They are included. Our mistake.
Okay. So I would agree. Let's add cork oaks. And are we, well, taking comments. I agree with the first bullet point. And I agree with the second bullet point. If we add native species and, well, add native species and before riparian trees, I don't think we should raise from the size from six to 12 for native trees on undeveloped properties. I think we need to protect all of the, if, if, if an oak tree has gotten to the six-inch mark, I think we should protect it. So I'm okay with raising the minimum size for all other trees, but I would like to keep it at six for native species and riparian trees, realizing we're just talking about undeveloped properties now.
Go ahead, Councilmember McCormick.
Just a clarification question. I agree, I think, to Councilmember Endury's comments, but there's a, I was confused by a sentence, again, not to be too nicky, but it talks about compared to Arinda's list. This is, Arinda's species are near, are criteria nearly identical to Lafayette's, except that Arinda excludes a list of disallowed tree species. And I'm sorry, that's, how's that different? I mean, I, I was confused on the exclude part. How is that, how is exactly is that different? How is that different from ours?
Our current tree protection ordinance does not exclude any species. You can plant any species. We typically require, if it's a protected species that you're removing, then we require the same species to go back in. But other, there are other triggers for protection, developed plans, et cetera, where you can plant any species at all versus with Arinda, there are certain species that cannot ever be planted, which.
I see. Okay. And we're not.
We don't have that current.
You chose not to include that as a recommendation or anything. You just observed, you're just, that's just an observation.
We do at a later point. We just don't put it here.
Okay.
So I'm, sorry for Councilmember Endury. I would put it up to 12 inches for all trees to help people understand what the ordinance is, not just the native ones. And I don't agree with bullet two on the developed properties, raise the size of protected trees from 18 to 24. I do not agree with that. I like the 12.
Wait, could you, could you repeat that?
Okay. Which, which one?
Well, the second one.
The second one. Oh, oh, so in the alternatives?
Oh, okay.
I don't agree with bullet two.
But point of clarification, right? We're not actually, we don't have to really opine on the alternatives, right? Because those are not being considered and we bring them in.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna proceed by not saying anything about alternatives unless I want it.
Right. That's how I interpreted that as well.
Is that what you want?
Yes, that would be helpful. So we want to hear if you disagree with the recommendation or would like to add any of the alternatives or anything else that's not written down.
Right. Because most of the alternatives were kind of, be kind of, were kind of out there on the.
Fine. Okay. So then I'll just stick to my first one, which is, I actually agree with both recommendations.
Okay. Commissioner Stern?
Well, I don't, I don't think this will gain consensus, but I'll just put it in as my comment. I think I would be supportive of the alternative for undeveloped properties in conjunction with raising the protected tree size to 12 inches because, and I don't have any data on this. I think this might be something like for another project. But I think, I think the city needs to think about the reason, when we look at the tree coverage and the, you know, the canopy layout from the earlier time, that might be closer to what our landscape looks like undeveloped, where it's a balance of grasslands and trees. And maybe with climate change, we want more tree coverage. We want, you know, buildings, structures shaded from view. Like, we have goals that are behind this tree protection ordinance. And I think in our hilly terrain, grass oftentimes doesn't grow very much under trees. So having more trees and less grasslands can lead to more erosion, too. So I think probably there's a happy medium where we, we need more tree coverage because that's where, that's what's gonna be best for our community now than, than before it was developed. But then also still maintaining some of the grasslands that go along with the oak trees. So that's why I like, just rather than just saying like every tree is good, looking at where are the native trees, where's the riparian like corridors and things like that, and protecting those and letting the rest be native grasses if possible.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll just chime in to add on to what this comment was because one, one of the striking things in reading through the, the materials that you presented is really good that you talked to so many people and included the notes. And, and really, you got a very broad range of technical experts in other cities and so forth. But there was one sentence in there that really caught my eye that said, "These tree protection ordinances really reflect a community's values." And I, I did think like, as we went through one through 11, it's like, how do I make a decision on each one of these? You really have to like, what are we trying to do here, right? It's like, and then I, I really felt like that was a very meaningful statement to me. It's like, what's the goal here? And what, what are we trying to accomplish? What's our values that, that a tree protection is, is trying to do? And I, in rereading why we did this 23 years ago, there, there is a statement of what we were trying to do. And I would say, hey, if we went from canopy cover 31% to 59% or whatever that number is, woo-hoo, we, you know, success. We, we really did a great job of achieving that. And then, but as we sit here looking at the next two decades, what, what are we trying to do? Do we still take that, what we wrote 20 years ago and keep doing that? Or is it something different? And I, I think you've written up that it needs to be something different. There, there are many frictions in, in this that are not perfect that you've addressed, that we, we need to address. But I do, I would find it useful if we knew what values we're trying to achieve here so that in this, you know, a comment like that is like really important in a way to just help us figure out how to, how to make these decisions on one to 11 and not just amend something to be a little bit better. But really, I, I sort of feel like, do we have a guiding light here? And, and I'm not certain I have that yet, but it seems to be missing to help us. Anyways, thank you. Do you need any other comments then on item number one?
No, we can move on. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't you click to the next slide? And then we'll talk about protected trees, trees on development plans. Go ahead, Councilmember Endury.
I'm okay with these.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Planning commission, see some nodding of heads. I'm in agreement on my notes, checking on these two, these recommendations. Okay. Not controversial. Let's go on to the third one then. Protected trees for street trees.
We did want to make a clarification here. You can see that one of these items is in light green color and struck out. In conversations recently with the city attorney, we were given to understand that we were perhaps reaching a bit too far. And the INLU fund can only be used for something that would clearly fall under the purpose of the tree ordinance. And so the tree ordinance, excuse me, the tree protection ordinance's goal is to protect trees. And therefore, the, the goal is not to pay fees or, you know, things like that. And so this is not something that the INLU fees could be used to cover. We could restructure it for something like a city tree permit. You know, a city's application for the tree permit would have no fee or something like that.
Thank you. All right. So we're looking at two recommendations on the left column and three alternatives. Any comments from the plannings? Commissioner Vice Chair?
I guess I'm uncomfortable with the now second bullet, waiver, reduce application fee if removal is city mandated. I think it should be waived completely if the city's mandating it. That's my personal opinion.
Okay.
I con, I concur. That was my thoughts while reading this. I just like, it seemed, it seemed kind of unbelievable, you know, unbelievable that, you know, I asked somebody to do it. Well, I mean, not unbelievable, because clearly there's times we do, we do things all the time for safety. I shouldn't say it that way. But clearly, if it's something that, you know, we're, we're asking that, them to do it and then also making them pay a permit fee to do it, I, I agree. It didn't feel like, it didn't feel like it was a spirit of kind of this values-oriented kind of thing that we're trying to, trying to agree. So I agree with that.
Councilmember Endury.
Okay. So on the, the first one, I agree with it, except for the last clause, phrase, but allow replacement trees to be planted on any public street or right-of-way instead of in the same location. I think there should, there should be more of an assumption that you're going to try to put it in the same place because, if you, if you can. Because we've, the downtown street trees, referring to the Downtown Street Improvement Plan, there's a reason why those trees are there. And to change the symmetry of the planting, I think, could be a problem. So I'd like, yes, if you absolutely can't plant it there, sure, plant it somewhere else. But I think there should be a big effort to keep it in the same place. And then on the third one, I'm okay with the first part of that, but waive mitigation planting in case replacement trees would only replicate the problem again. I think we have to be very sure that there's not ability to put a tree in that same spot, that we couldn't do something with the type of pavement or the area around the tree before we eliminate the, a tree in that spot.
I'm okay with that. And I, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm okay for us to remove the city to pull tree permits. I would be okay with that, just to say. I, I think that our staff is, knows exactly what our intentions are for these trees. And I trust our staff. If they have to do it, then they're gonna be cognizant of it.
And just to follow on that, I, I kind of agree too because I know there was a comment in there about like it would, it would help with public trust or whatever. But when I would thought, when I saw that, I thought, well, you know, I mean, if the city, if the city department's asking for it, the city's gonna approve it. I mean, it didn't, to me, it doesn't really affect the trust factor or not. I mean, maybe it's fair for documentation. So you can see, I could see that as particular. But I didn't, I kind of agree that the, I didn't really get the trust thing because it's, you would just assume they would say yes.
So I'll be the dissenting voice on that. I, I, I think it's important when we're talking about removing trees, particularly from the downtown area, that we have two sets of eyes, two sets of views on it. As much as I love our public works, I think it's also useful to have planning take a look at it.
Could we, maybe an idea would be, later down, there's an option where planning director has her view to be that arbiter. Because I agree, I think it seems odd to have the city, but if we want to have somebody watching it, I would just, I, I like that idea because I think it's a little overreached to have the city require itself to do it. But if you want someone paying attention, then the second eyes would be the planning director to approve. Just a suggestion. You'll see it later on. It's, it's used later. So that's, that's what I would prefer.
And I would, maybe I'm somewhere in between. I definitely am leaning to the theme of how do we streamline this tree protection ordinance? There's, there's just a lot of process that we have in here that might be, we could benefit from reducing. And this is the example of, should we require our city to fill out its own paperwork to do this? I would just say, well, you know, if we could streamline it, let's, let's streamline it. But, you know, checks and balances is also good. But I think in the general direction of how do you streamline and still have some checks and balances would be sort of where I, I would weigh in on this. But I think the overall effort to make this easier, we are a limited resources city, right? We talk about a budget crisis and having to cut back. And we need to be, we have to work more efficiently. And I think another theme, I, just in general of what we're trying to do here is let's make this easier on our residents. Let's make it easier on our planning department, which is already very, very burdened. They, we really don't have enough time to look at every single tree in the city. You know, it just, we would like to, but we have to be realistic about our staffing ability and the cost of that, too. So anyways, just the theme of streamlining, but with some checks and balances. All right. So this is item three. Are there any other comments on item three? If not, we'll move to item four. Replacement trees, the number and size required. Okay. McCormick?
I, I like the, reading the context of the whole thing about the sheer number of trees and trying to find places for trees and this arbitrarily plenty, planting trees too close. I mean, the conclusion, I think just simplicity and where we are right now, I thought the one-to-one replacement requirement recommendation was a good one. Start there.
Okay. So I'm basically in agreement with the one-on-one. I'm definitely in agreement with using only the 15-gallon trees. using only the 15 gallon trees. I think they do ultimately turn out to be the best. But I'm a little bit concerned if someone comes in and is applying for, say, removal of a 30 inch diameter oak tree. And we're going to say, well, sure, that's fine. And then you can plant a 15 gallon over here. I'd like to see this, look at something in those situations where saying, okay, well, under our current ordinance, if you came in with that 30 inch tree, you'd be planting 10 trees. So you plant one tree and then you pay the in lieu fee for the other nine you don't have to plant. I would suggest something like that. Because I think when you're coming in and you're removing a tree that's a significant tree, I think there should be, you know, something that.
So you're thinking there's some sort of barrier or some sort of size criteria for that? Or is that at all, at all, I mean, you keep the three minute?
I would just make it, to make it simple, I would just say that you use the current standard determine.
At the three inch per tree.
You only have to plant one and then you can, you can plant the others on your property if you want. But you can pay the in lieu fee if you don't want to plant them.
How much is that in lieu fee?
Right now, it's $260, I think.
So that'd be.
Per tree?
Per tree. Yeah.
Per tree. You'd have to.
Again, remember, right now, if someone removes 30 inch tree, they're planting 10 replacement trees.
But your proposal doesn't really, I get, all it does is kind of like automatically, it gives people a choice.
Yeah.
What to do.
Exactly.
Except for the one, like one mandatory.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, other comments?
Just so I'm clear that if we were doing that, wouldn't we subtract the 15, though, that they're going to put and say, okay, now you need five trees? Wouldn't that be the equivalency?
Subtract.
So if I read this right, so three, for every three inches, you need a tree, right? So a 30 inch tree is 10?
No, for every three inches, yeah, you need one tree. That's right.
That's right. You get one out.
You're putting one tree in, that's 15 inch.
No, 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 15 gallon.
That's 15 gallon tree. Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Why are we talking about it? Okay. Never mind. I'm on board.
I have a question on the 15 gallon. Is it, use a 15 gallon minimum? They could do something bigger? Or you have to do exactly that?
I believe that 15 gallon is a standard size at nurseries such as, same as 24 inch, 36 inch. Those are kind of the steps up. And the reference that we made to an article from the ISA, International Society of Arborists, not arborists, it's like arboriculturists or something. They did a, or wrote an article that said that smaller trees transplant better. They don't necessarily grow faster, though that's kind of the anecdotal story that we're hearing from arborists. But the article said that they transplant better primarily because their root ball is smaller and is trimmed less, so they recover more quickly and they can kind of be healthier faster. So the reason we had to limiting it to be smaller is because they will likely result in a healthier tree long term. So there's, there's nothing against a larger tree. And there are certain circumstances with development permits where a larger tree might be more desirable for privacy concerns. But if we're just looking at health of the tree, we would recommend a 15 gallon.
And therefore, if a larger one were planted, it would not be compliant with, to fulfill this, in terms of your recommendation here?
That's correct.
Wow.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was thinking if we did, I mean, and I read your section about the root ball and so forth, but, but still, I would, I would say, I would just, in my mind, it was a question mark whether the requirement is a minimum of a 15 gallon tree, but you could do bigger. And I wanted to clarify that.
And it's certainly an alternative that you could all approve.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I have to admit, not allowing, just allowing somebody to plant a slightly bigger tree, because you know, if you're taking out a tree that provides a lot of shade and you will replant a tree and somehow, if you plant a, the next size up, you're, you're kind of still in violation of our ordinance, seems counterintuitive, I guess, in the spirit of, because I kind of agree with like, Vice Mayor's like, I think the goal overall should make this kind of like simpler, more streamlined, easier to understand. And that, that is, that feels weird to me that, I don't know. I like, I would support a minimum 15 gallon tree, but I don't know if I would support, we somehow punish you if you do the next size up or something.
And I, and I would like to, if you take out a 30 inch oak tree, I get it, and that we're sad, and we want to replace it with, was it 10 other trees? You know, over 20 years, is that really where, is that really achieving?
No, we don't replace it. We don't replace it. I'm just saying that.
No, but we, but we would, like, under your thing, you have to pay an in lieu fee or you have to plant these 10 trees. And I.
No, no, you would, you would, you would plant, well, you could plant, if you wanted to plant 10 trees, you could plant 10 trees. You're only required to plant one tree. And it can be, I agree with what was just discussed, it can be a 15 gallon tree, or it could be bigger if they elect to make it bigger. But if you elect to plant one tree, then you pay an in lieu fee for the nine trees you're not planting.
I know. But I mean, it's all the same thing. You're paying, you're paying to not plant those other trees. But, so for me, you know, if I'm going down for a one to two replacement, it's smart. I like the one to one. But then it's all the whole diameter thing where I just, I mean, that's not really in this section, but I think that we're super aggressive on that part of our statute. And so I would be open to not being quite as aggressive on that part of the statute.
Well, I'd be open to making it for every six inches.
Well.
Or something. Exactly.
Or in line with what we've been on average requiring in any.
Right, something like that.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think, yeah, it could be.
What I'm saying is that if we go all the way down, for two, one for one, I don't see a 15 gallon oak tree that's going to take 20 to 30 years to mature, to be in lieu of a 30 inch tree that's removed. So I think there should be more that the person needs to do.
So, so where are we then? I guess I'm.
I have to give you some out.
Is that, is that how we're doing? We can, we can have.
Since we're not doing any kind of voting or straw polls or anything, we will take what we hear and do our best to put that in the draft. And then both bodies will have a chance to review it as it goes through.
Good.
Okay. I mean, I, I mean, this sort of prompts another comment that I would have that, that in reading the commentary also, we had arborists and homeowners and developers say, you know, every site is different. And we really need to be able to use our expertise to design what's right for this location. But the city has these rules that are very, you know, when did you think of those rules and that we have to follow? They may not make any sense at all. And so I sometimes think we're well intentioned to be prescriptive here about a 15 inch this, or 10 of that, or six inches. But I generally think that that, you know, we already have successfully gotten to 59% canopy here. The goal is like, let's let the people make their own good decisions. They're hiring, you know, arborist experts, say, you know, let them make the decision. We don't really have to, in this form, I don't think, be highly prescriptive, I would say. And so I generally am leaning more towards simplification of this code, allowing for a one for one, even though that's not perfect. And, but I just think if we stick our fingers too much in this, we just end up with another complicated thing again. And I think we should, at this point with 59% canopy, trust the public to, at least for a decade, you know, we don't have to listen forever. This is just the next 10 years. So, yeah, go ahead.
Unless I'm misunderstanding, your comments don't really go to the canopy. Because in every case, we're going to have a reduced canopy.
Which I think is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not getting it, I guess. I mean, we're vastly simplifying the existing resolution. We're going from subjectivity to pure objectivity here. And we're giving options to the homeowner. So, I mean, we can go from being criticized for being too subjective and having various decisions to being now criticized for having, you know, too rigid a program here. But I doubt that that's going to be a concern. I think this is very simple and understandable.
I'm in favor of the first bullet point as is, and then the second bullet point as a use of a minimum 15 gallon tree.
Yeah, I am too.
On this point. We're in violent agreement again.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. All right. If there are no more on four, let's go to number five. Yes.
I want to thank staff or consultant for doing all the thinking on this and coming up with the proposal. I agree with the proposal.
For number five, five as is. Okay.
I did have a quick question, though. I'm sorry. Not to, I agree. What percentage, what percentage of time does a planning director get involved in these and do the mitigation? I was not, I never said, I was just kind of said that happens frequently.
Typically, when the code references the planning director, that is meant to be the representative of all decision making made in the department. And so often, the code usually refer to the planning director when in fact it is various staff members making the decision with the possibility to involve the planning director for additional support or review if needed.
Understood.
So the, the final bullet under five, four, require, allow applicants to pay in lieu fees if a property only has room to plant in a zone zero. I don't think we should be requiring them to do anything if the only room left is in zone zero.
Cindy, don't require them to pay the in lieu fee.
Don't require them to pay the in lieu fee.
I think that's a good catch.
Well, what we're doing theoretically here is we're allowing someone to cut down a tree so they can put in an enlargement of their home. And then we're saying, okay, so that cuts out all the areas where you could plant a tree. So, okay, you take out the tree, you don't have to play anything in lieu. I think in.
If it's in zone zero, if they only are down to zone zero, that's what this says, right?
That was, they did that by expanding their home.
Well, yeah, I, I agree. And if they expanded their home and they took out a tree and that's, you know, but the only place left is put it in a zone zero.
They've paid in an in lieu fee.
That's, I don't agree. But that's just me.
I guess it's hard to know why. I think you're right. So, I mean, I think in that scenario, it feels disingenuous. But there could be other times where you just don't have room on your property and you had to take down, take, take out a tree and are you forced to?
Right.
Hey, so, I mean, I know your scenario is correct. It just feels like it's hard to know all the different reasons somebody comes to the requirement, so.
Comments? Yeah?
I have one. What if you're trying to create a zone zero by removing a tree?
I think we cover that. That's for safety reasons, right? I think we cover it later in the safety. No, that's more pertinent to this current topic.
So I'd need to think about it more, but I just thought of that as you were talking. Councilmember Kandell.
Just for clarity, we do talk about the location of replacement trees in a later section. I believe that's where we get to the zone zero.
Okay.
It's actually in fire, I think.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on this one? All right. Let's go to the next one then. Replacement tree species.
I'm good with this one.
Agreed.
Good with all.
Anybody else? All right. I am too. All right. The next one then, seven.
I'm good with this one.
No comments. I think we're all good down here as well.
I wanted, I like the alternative idea of the East Bay Regional Parks District being a partner to offer in lieu plantings there. Is that something that you actually talked to them about that might, they might be interested in?
It is not something we've had time to reach out to them on. It is an idea.
Right. I mean, I do, I like that idea. And I was, if I had time today, I would have made some calls to ask about that of whether they have a program like that. But to the extent that they are in the business of tending to their trees and they have some planning around where they would put them and their species, and that would be a healthy place for them. And it's in Brione's or somewhere right here in our community, that, that to me made, that was a good alternative in cases where sometimes it just doesn't make sense to plant your tree on your property. But it would be an outlet that would, I like that one.
I will point out that this stayed in when we previously had our own Parks, Trails and Recs Department included as an option. But in speaking to Jonathan, he told us that they don't need any help planting trees. The squirrels handle it just fine for them. So he asked to be removed. They don't need the trees. And it's quite possible East Bay Regional Parks would have the same response. We have not had a chance to have that conversation.
Okay. Any other comments then on seven? Okay, let's go to eight.
I have a question on this. On the second bullet point, for trees that have branches of multiple trunks that protrude into zone zero, allow branches and multi trunk trees to be pruned back to five feet from the structure. Is that horizontally or vertically? If the tree is going over the house, is that requiring five feet? What is that intended to cover?
When we wrote it, we were originally thinking horizontally. That is generally how zone zero is thought of. But in speaking to experts, they did reference vertical heights to tree branches, and it might be wise to include all directions.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments on this one? McCormick?
You know, I, I'm really sensitive, I think, in, you know, we suffered this, just taking a little personally, the insurance company, you know, threatening to drop unless you cut down trees or whatever. And so that felt, I know, you kind of, you kind of, you worked around the idea about whether if Confire said you had to delete, you know, cut down the tree, do you, do it require a permit? And you said Arinda, it still does. This is where I think, I think we need to be, make it easier for, I mean, we all benefit if we have more fire safe and have more defensible spaces. It's not just the, it's not just the person in the house, but it's the neighbors in the neighborhood. And so I think if Confire sends a letter saying you got to cut down a tree for fire safety, I don't know why we'd make them pay for a tree permit. We're all, if Confire is saying it, we should, I think we should, we should do it. And insurance companies, same kind of thing. I mean, they're like, an insurance company is saying, we're going to cancel, which we, you know, we're going to cancel your, your fire insurance, homeowner insurance, if you don't cut down this tree that's close to your property. And we're going to, for fire safety, and then we're also going to make them pay a permit fee. That also seemed, I was surprised at that. I would be, I would be quite happy to let them slide on that. Assuming they could show the letter. I mean, you have to have some sort of proof, but I, that was, I think we are in an insurance crisis as well as a fire crisis. So I'd be happy, anything we can do to kind of mitigate that for our community, I'd be happy with.
Okay, Chair LeBanche?
While I support that sentiment, I am a little worried if we give insurance companies a blank check to just say, well, then cut all the trees down, because I can guarantee there'll be less fires if you cut every tree down. And not that I don't trust insurance companies, but I don't trust insurance companies. I'd be really careful on that one. But I like the sentiment.
You're right. Maybe it could be some sort of verification or something. That's fair, but.
Councilmember Derry?
A quick question. On that first bullet, what would the homeowner do? Would they file an application? Because there's not a reference to an application or a notice.
Under alternatives we were talking about?
No, no, the first bullet point.
Eight point four, the first bullet.
Without, it says without a tree permit or application fee.
Yeah. So we would probably create a new process where there is some paperwork, but not an official permit. So they would need to submit a site plan with photos of the tree location adjacent to the property within the five feet to verify that that tree actually exists and has that measurement. They could, I mean, a photo with a tape measure would probably suffice. But some kind of verification that that's the location and that's the tree that's being removed. Then with that verification that staff looks at, we issue them an approval letter, done. That's, there's no permit or fee or further review.
Okay. And then a question on the third bullet point. Did you have discussions with Confire? Well, I'm thinking about the shaded fuel breaks and the concept of shaded fuel breaks. And this seems to be saying that on larger parcels. Okay, describing which trees will be removed for the fuel break. Do we need to be more, well, do we need to think about whether there should be a shaded fuel break? In other words, you don't need to cut the tree, you just trim the tree up and take away the vegetation that's around it?
That's certainly something that we can include in our language. You can. Um, you can trust a fire to recommend for a shaded fuel break when that's possible versus a full fuel break. The difference being, just so we're on the same page, a full fuel break is a complete removal of all vegetation. You often see them plowed. Um, and so a fuel break in a forest is what looks like what you see under wires, basically, all trees removed.
Yeah.
A shaded fuel break remains, uh, usually the, the bigger, healthier trees, sometimes the smaller ones, but they're all trimmed up so that fire cannot jump from the grass into the canopy.
Yep, and I'm just thinking since we've got shaded fuel breaks and we probably should have more shaded fuel breaks around Lafayette. I'd just like to make sure that we're consistent with that concept.
This item could be limited just to shaded. It could be recommended shaded if at all possible. Uh, you can limit it however you like.
Okay, well, I'll leave that to you as you have further discussions. You know, generally I, with the explanation of God, I'm happy with all three of these bullets.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I guess I would just add on that, if, if Con, Con, Confire says shaded, that's how we need to do, right? Go with their recommendation, I would think. So then we could pick that up. If that's what they want, then so we just add a little additional language.
On the first bullet, I would like to revisit the second half of the sentence, which requires the property owner to show the tree location on a site plan. Because this is going to use up staff time. It takes, it's a process. And yet, what, what value add is the staff going to do if we have a rule that says between zero and five feet, you, you are permitted to remove a tree? What further process is really needed to verify that?
You're right. If you wanted to limit it to a photograph, uh, you could, I mean, one of the alternatives is to not require any verification at all. And simply say, people are allowed to remove trees, no permit if it's in the zone zero. Nothing, no verification.
I would lean towards that way unless there's some value added of having this go through this extra process. And is whoever's at the staff is just going to look at it's five feet, then it's five feet. Like, what, 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 what is the value added there? I, I just don't, I think we're adding work to the staff and whenever we have an objective criteria that's five feet and it's measured, then that's what it is. But I would, I would just say, you sort of penalize honest people who are, again, which is another theme of that has been talked about, like the people who spend all the time to do that and then, but this is not really, this is an objective view. It's if it says over the five feet, then they're going to get a, a stamp of approval. So that was just not, I don't see the, the great use of our staff time on that.
And I, I agree with that. And I also want to have it, oh, I was going to add, if we were going to keep it like this, requiring the photos, I, I would make it, let's make sure that we don't penalize them for not sending in a photo on time or something, you know, because a lot of people aren't going to really understand this and they're going to hear from their insurance or they're going to hear from someone and go, oh, I'm going to remove these. So.
A friendly retroactive.
Or some, yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Durry?
I, I assure you, I'm not going to fight this battle, but I would point out that based on what our tree experts say, and again, thank you very much for talking to those people. That's exactly what I hoped you would do and you did it. But when you read what they said, it's pretty clear to me that you could have a, our hypothetical thirty inch oak within five feet of a home pruned, pruned up to forty feet. And that's not going to be a real, that's not going to be a fire danger. That's not going to be what sets the house on fire. I'm not going to fight this one, but I would just point out that I don't see a problem with keeping those trees. And that the tree is not going to catch on fire before the house catches on fire. The tree is not going to lead to the house burning, so.
Yeah, that was a very good, um, uh, comment that was written and the photos obviously showed that. But I, I have seen many houses where the, the leaves are all in the gutters that come down, right? So it's not the tree trunk.
Problem.
And it is a problem of, you know, whether it's a eucalyptus, there are many dirty trees there that leave a lot of stuff and people are, you know, not up there maintaining it. And that does catch, that, that does actually catch on fire. So I, um, I hear you on that one. And, um, but I think, again, the fire department's already providing this guidance to, to really clear out zero to five. So I think we should just make it easier on our residents to just understand that simple message. If there's something zero to five, take it away. Just don't make it any more complicated for people or more bureaucratic, um, for better or worse.
Agreed.
All right. Okay, any other comments on number eight? Otherwise, we'll go to number nine. Dead or dying trees.
Quick, quick question. And in the first bullet, first sub bullet, it says as either fully dead. Was there something that was left out?
Apologies, that is a mistake. We used to have dying included in the first recommendation. We took that out.
Okay.
So now the recommendation is just for fully dead trees.
Okay.
Can I ask, on average, how much is a tree permit versus how much is an arborist report?
A tree permit is three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, I don't know what an average arborist report runs. I would guess that it's slightly under a thousand to two thousand dollars ballpark.
If it were me, I would just get a tree permit and remove the dead tree rather than paying for an arborist report to get a free tree permit. Something to think about.
Hey, John?
I, I'd like to entertain the, um, alternative one on that. Just a brief anecdote, just because we lived this in the last three years, that our, our business, you know, our business, we have a parking lot with two, two giant big oak trees. And then we're next to where my kitchen was. In two thousand twenty-one, one of the two oak trees fell over and crushed a car in our parking lot. Luckily, it was a Sunday and the person was not in the car. Um, we, the second oak tree, this like six months ago, started showing signs of distress. It was pretty clearly dead. Our landlord, because they're responsible for that, um, took out the tree because it would clearly have fallen, uh, but it was not dead. And so he's having to put in, you know, four twenty-four, twenty-four inch, you know, uh, trees, uh, which are probably, and what the arborist and the tree permits, probably like a five thousand dollar cost to him for actually doing the right thing, right? We actually took, the tree was clearly dying. It was going to follow its brother or sister tree. Um, and potentially hit cars in the parking lot. And so I would be very much in favor of allowing that if, if it's certified as very poor or, or on its way to demise versus actually making sure the tree is dead, because the tree that fell on our car, on the car, it was just, uh, it was, it was completely kind of unexpected, you know? So that'd be my, I mean, just again, because we're living it right now, he's having to pay for it and like, oh yeah, I'm, I'm very sympathetic. So I would, I would like, uh, alternative one to be.
Yes, Commissioner Stewart?
And even if a tree is healthy, sometimes the soil erodes and it's just clearly going to fall. And you can tell what's happening at the base of the tree before that happens. So if someone's being a good, you know, property owner and telling them, and there's, sometimes there's nothing you can do to save those too, I don't think so. I, I would also be in favor of, I mean, changing the wording to add like, you know, a tree that's failing or nearly going to fall down or something like that, a safety issue.
So you're looking at the alternatives column, the third bullet down, allow planning staff instead of arborist to verify that the tree is dead, dying or dead, dying?
Or. Dying or.
At risk.
What would be, or in danger of falling.
A safety risk.
If I can jump in, we do actually have an exception, um, to the tree permit requirement for trees that are hazardous. Um, it is something that a lot of people try to use and we reject. But when a tree is clearly leaning, um, when we have an arborist report that says this is on its way down and it is an imminent threat to property or life, um, we don't require a tree permit at all. And that is in the current code with no proposed changes to it.
Does that require an arborist viewpoint?
It does.
See, that, that again is like for a thousand dollars. I, I just, I think that's an extra barrier that, again, it's already costly for the services to be performed. I just.
This is something we struggled with. Um, we are aware that arborist reports are costly and take time when you're worried about things. Um, on the other hand, this is an area that many people try to shoehorn trees that might fall in a year um, into the hazard section. Um, and we try to allow, uh, people to find this, use this exemption only when the tree is truly leaning. It is in the act of falling, obviously, hopefully not on its way down. But it's, I mean, we've had a few examples that are, are very clear. It's leaning and going to come down in the next few days. Um, that's where we use this exemption.
And again, that would be for a protected tree. If it was a pine tree or a eucalyptus leaning, they don't need a permit. They can just cut it down, right? So it's, we're really talking about a, a smaller set. It's not all trees.
Can I just say, I think it's important to keep that in mind throughout this entire discussion.
Yeah.
Glad you asked that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think it's worth educating the public, all of us, to know which, that today's discussion is really about protected trees and that unprotected trees of any size, if they're, whether you like them or not, you don't need a permit. You don't have to pay the, the three hundred and fifty dollar fee to take them down. Uh, and that, that is something, again, I think m- members of the public would benefit from knowing that. Okay, so we're still on item nine.
Yeah, so I, I have a question. And it's all about the arborist. Would planning staff be able to, to do this task if we?
This is a great question. I've, I've spoken to Penn Phillips, our city, um, landscape consultant. And, uh, he says he would be willing to try to put together a guide, but it would be, um, rough. You know, we are not trained tree professionals. The idea is to eliminate things like site visits where, that take a lot of time. Um, I don't know exactly what would be involved. I'm, I've never done, you know, a trunk cori, I don't, I even, I don't even know how you judge these things. So we'd have to do some learning. It would take some time. It, it would be an additional step. So we would, you know, the only way to make it quick and easy would have to allow some mistakes.
In addition to that, I'm wondering if, is it, is there a liability issue where with the tree professional, they have insurance related to this matter? And if we're asking the city to assess it, then it's putting the liability on the city?
That's a good question.
We have not considered that at this time.
Right, and I guess also reflecting back on Vice Mayor's comment about trying to lessen the burden on the staff. That's, you know, that's tough, because I think that's, that's a, that's a good overarching goal too.
Yeah, my comment on this, I, I had written that, um, again, no permit required to remove a dead tree, but not require the letter from the arborist. But then you're really relying on what? You're relying on the, the homeowner or the owner to make that assessment, which can err on the side of, um, overcutting, right? But on the other hand, it does streamline things, uh, in the spirit of, we are trying to streamline, but we are sort of letting people police their own trees. Now, some, like a dead pine tree is pretty obvious when you're driving down Highway twenty-four and you see that dead pine tree, you pretty much, you could say, you don't need to pay a thousand dollar. Arborists anyways, pines are not protected, but I guess oak trees, I don't know if they're more difficult to determine if they're alive or not.
Idea is, um, you know, for deciduous trees, it has to be a summer permit. If there's no leaves on the tree, we're okay calling it dead. Um, but that takes out half the year, so.
Right, and I would say actually, the arborist thing is probably, if, if we go ahead and expand to the very poor condition, then I think the arborist is probably, it's more, it's, you know, clearly dead, maybe we can all agree on objective standards for that. The very po, very poor or poor condition, and we want to extend to that, then I think you probably have to have an arborist in there somehow to kind of confirm that, because that's very subjective at that point. So maybe you can't have one without the other.
Okay, anybody else have ideas for staff here? Otherwise, they have to go wrestle with this. They get to figure it out. Okay. Keep going then, to number ten. Tree removal for safety. Comments?
I'm a no on this.
Councilmember Durry, okay. And ten point four.
Agreed.
Okay.
I'm a no.
So if we say no on this, then we keep it as it is? Okay, thank you.
And, and what is, can you just describe the current situation that they would?
So there's two phrases that are proposed to be added, um, which is expanding. Currently, it says when the city removes a protected tree, uh, or it, when the city must remove a protected tree, um, it must be for the health, safety, et cetera. And so the added proposal or the proposal is to add um, or another public agency or utility and the language at the end, as determined by the director. And so in this case, I think it would fall to the actual planning director to review an application from any outside agency or utility and say, is this actually a safety issue? Is there general welfare at stake?
Okay, and so if the amendment does not take place and both those sentences are, clauses are struck, then?
We would return to the phrase as it is now, which reads, when the city must remove a protected tree to protect health, safety and general welfare of the community. Oh, you're right, that is a partial sentence. Where is the? Okay, so it's a partial sentence because it, yeah, because it has a lead in the, an exception to the requirements of this chapter may be granted when the city must remove a tree for health and safety is the summary. So we were adding to that.
And so you're adding, so you're, you're proposing two pieces, right? So the public, other public agency, which is, I think, probably a no for us, and then remove it as determined by the director. So right now, who reviews it if we have to remove it?
So right now, uh, when an application comes in from the city, because we do still require it, any staff member would review it. We were proposing that secondary phrase to put a close eye on any utility or agency application that might come in.
So I can agree with that second part.
Sorry?
So I agree with the second part and not the first part.
Okay.
You, you mean, you would strike the reference to the public agency, but you would keep as determined by the director? So you would, um, instead of having staff look at this issue, it would be, you would still suggest amending it to including the director?
And I'm, I'm thinking that we're going to make it so we don't have to actually go get an actual permit. And so I still, like, maybe this is how you tie it back in, where if we don't require the city to get its own permit, we still have the director look at it, right?
Okay. Other comments?
Well, well, I, I thought, so before the, my, my, the, by the director to me, reference or other public agency, which I absolutely thought needed a director to do that versus staff, if it's just the city, I, I would be okay with staff reviewing, planning staff versus just planning director, if it's just the city. That's just my opinion. But if we were to have the other agencies, which I personally was okay with, knowing that the director was going to be going yea or nay to avoid any trail trees getting removed or something like that.
And, and to clarify, that was why director was added, was to, to have a second set of eyes on the other agency or utilities. And then I also wanted to clarify, if no change is made, there are some entities that are exempt from our ordinance, so that wouldn't change.
Okay. All right, you've got some mixed messages on this one, mixed feedback, but that's par for the, that's okay.
Could I ask one thing?
Yes.
Are those exemptions only if we don't add this language or they're exempted regardless?
They're exempted regardless. That's why I wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Okay, we're in the home stretch, right? Number eleven.
This is the last one.
All right. Fines, penalties.
Yeah, I didn't see anything about jail time here.
Councilmember Durry suggesting jail time.
Talking about going to tree, tree jail or something like that, yeah.
Okay.
I can agree with these.
Okay.
I don't, no comment.
No objection from my left?
Yeah, I think, I think it's too low.
Too low? Twenty-five hundred is too low?
Yeah.
What do you propose?
See, my note I wrote here was use Palo Alto or Walnut Creek. So where did, where were those described? Oh, okay.
Oh.
Yeah, it's up above an eleven three.
Yeah.
I mean, Palo Alto is ten thousand dollars per tree.
Yeah, I, I, I like that, um, the scale that, you know, it goes by the importance of the tree.
The only, my, my perspective on that, and it's kind of two-part, uh, if it was nefariously removed, I'm all for that. Um, if, and this is the hard part, right? This is the mousetrap versus objective or standards. Um, I think it was just in the news about someone spiking a tree, you know, for a view. This stuff really does happen. We do have hills. We do have views that will be, uh, impacted or, but I also get nervous if somebody makes a mistake and it clearly wasn't nefariously determined to do. That's a big, so could there be some catchall at the end that gives us? That's a big, so could there be some catch-all at the end that gives us an out if, if it's, and maybe goes back to a lesser amount? I know we don't like to do exceptions, but, you know.
It does say illegal tree removal. Does that make you feel more comfortable? Create fines for illegal tree removal of 2,500 for the first fence, 5,000 for the second. That's the staff recommendation. And councilmember Manderi, you're suggesting what?
Well, is walnut, let me ask the city attorney and staff. Is the Walnut Creek a no fault? You cut it for any reason? You're a subject to the penalty?
We don't know.
Okay.
But the concern I have is the nefarious intent would be hard for staff to be able to prove or not prove. So if someone could say, I didn't know about the ordinance, then.
Oh, well, let's, I mean, let's take a case that neighbor starts to cut down his tree and he stopped, and three years later, he goes out and cuts it down. I mean, we can show intent in some cases, right?
In, in some cases, if we have documentation, like we had a notice of violation, it was the same owner. But you could see scenarios where maybe the house was sold and it was a different owner who didn't know.
Yeah, my, my only concern is that we've seen so many cases of trees, protected trees, oak trees, them being cut down without getting a permit. And sure, our canopy has expanded, although that's incredible expansion. But still, these, these heritage oak trees, or even 20-inch oak trees, I mean, they're really important to the way the city, you know, feels as you drive through it. So I think while we simplify the process, we make the process more clear, I think we also have to make sure that if somebody acts maliciously to just, to avoid the process and cut a tree, that there is a penalty for that.
Did you know, I mean, I just noticed that the staff recommendation does accelerate. So it kind of allows you, if you happen to cut one down, you know, but then double, 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 it gets pretty, I'm just, I mean, versus the Walnut Creek one, which looks, it looks like it's $10,000 per tree for as many trees as, that, that, that's all I'm, because this has the accelerator clause.
Yeah, well, I'm.
Don't have that many.
I don't think that solves the problem. I mean, the person with one big oak tree on his property is one and done.
Yeah, that's no.
Maybe the accelerator should be like Walnut Creek does on the size. I like what, where you were going with that, because if it's a really massive one, you know, hopefully you had the wherewithal to think it through versus a little one that you made a mistake on. It's the real big ones that are the ones that are the nefarious ones that neighbors argue over, you know, because it's a massive view, so. I guess if we were doing a larger one that was tied to size, I would be, think that would be more fitting of the problem we're trying to solve.
And let, let me ask, what is in the Palo Alto when it's first a reproduction cost of each tree? How is that calculated? Do we know?
I'm not sure about that. But we could look into it.
Okay, Commissioner Stern?
Well, maybe I should add that some cities do base the fine, like if you look at Menlo Parks there, on the appraised value of the tree, and they'll have either a cap or a minimum, you know, that it's like whichever is lower or whichever is higher. And so, and that way you could capture, you know, a greater fine for a bigger tree. So there are ways of calculating the environmental value of a tree. But I don't know what, specifically what Palo Alto means about the reproduction cost.
Okay, and I, I did the math on the Walnut Creek when my hypothetical 30-inch tree would be a $10,000 fine. 30-inch diameter.
All right, Commissioner Stern?
I was just thinking in terms of, of trying to match this dollar value to the value of the tree. To me, if you think about how old these trees are, that's where the value comes in, because they can't be replaced. They've been growing for all that time, so to me, it would make sense to tie the dollar value to the size, you know, which is also the, the age of the tree.
I understand that, that does make sense. And then you're not penalized as much for a, a small tree.
If an older, larger tree has more embodied value.
All right. Anything else on 11? Okay, looks like we're good. What would you like to do next?
You have answered our questions. I'm very impressed that we made it through that quickly. Thank you so much for your clarity. We will parse our notes and the recordings. And we just wanted to say thank you. Obviously, the next step is to bring you a draft ordinance. We are hoping to do so in the fall. So you will see us back here in a few months.
All right, thanks for the great work. Again, really good organization. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks to the planning commission. All right, that was a very good session there on item 10. So we'll go to item 11, which is our consent calendar. Does anybody on the council have a desire to pull an item on the consent calendar? No? Does anybody in the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, then, do I have a motion?
No moved.
A second?
All right, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the vote is four. Votes in favor, 401, it's approved. We'll go on to agenda item number 13, which is staff reports. Jenny Rosen, the staff liaison to the Public Art Committee, is going to present a request for approval of public art for Woodhaven at 3742 Mount Diablo Boulevard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and City Council members, for giving us this opportunity to present the public art proposal for the artwork at 3742 Mount Diablo Boulevard. It's called Woodhaven, and it's a six condominium unit complex. Tonight, I've got the property owner, Nikhil Gera, with us, the artist, Mariana Botero, and Erling Horn from the Public Art Committee. So I thought I'd just do a really short introduction, and then Mariana has a brief presentation for you. And I've been looking at all these teleprompters. I think I'm going to start today. Get myself a teleprompter. The Public Art Committee met twice with the applicant, Mr. Nikhil Gera, and artist Ms. Mariana Botero in May and June of this year. Both were receptive to committee concerns about the durability of the originally proposed acrylic and the impact of the building's signage on the artwork. As a result, Ms. Botero researched and proposed an alternative medium that preserves the conceptual integrity of the work while meeting our standards for ease of maintenance and longevity. The Public Art Committee believes the revised proposal meets all criteria and budget requirements as per our municipal code and exemplifies a successful collaboration between the applicant and the committee. And I'd like to stress that working with this applicant was a, a real pleasure. They took all of the feedback really seriously and did a lot of work to come back for that second proposal. Ms. Botero was born in Columbia and graduated from the Rhode Island School of Design with a BFA and a master's in architecture. Her work has been featured internationally in Medellin, Miami, New York, and Madrid. She also founded a design studio now, now based in San Francisco, focusing on the intersection of art and architecture. She'll go ahead and give a brief presentation about the work, after which we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Sorry.
Yeah, just one comment on the staff report right at the bottom, its conclusion. Well, this particular application was an example of the joy of being involved in a city committee, because it was just a wonderful experience to see the committee, the artist, and the owner of the property, and the, and the sponsor of the property, to sort of collaborate together, work together, and come up with a very superior art project to the greater benefit of the city and to the property owner and to the people that are going to live there. And you will see that, but, but it was just one of the great pleasures and of our commission and committee system. I want to thank you for supporting that.
Thank you for your volunteer work, and thanks to the owners and the artists for being so collaborative. That's what we like in Lafayette.
Thank you, and thank you for those very kind words. So, let me know. Oh, okay. With a duplicate? One second, please, I, I need the back.
Take your time, it's all right.
There we go. Can you hear me okay? So this is a summary of the work we have been doing. Woodhaven is on 3742 Mount Diablo. It has its six condos. I want to mention that I'm also the interior designer of the project. And when the name came up to be Woodhaven, I, I immediately started to think about what that felt like. And to me, it meant eh, that shelter, surrounded by nature, being very home, very safe. And that blissful moment where light comes through the trees and the different colors that it creates. And I started to think how we could translate that into an architectural and an art piece. I found out through, through the research that there's a Japanese word called komorebi for this. So that would be the name of the art piece. I believe you already have the artist statement, so I won't read it. But then through the research and after receiving the feedback from the committee, we went ahead and found a company that is globally well-known and in terms of laminated glass, colored glass, they are the best of their kind. And serendipitously, I think they have a, I found that they have a, a project or a program for architects and interior designers to propose sculptures and art projects that enhance the building. So they work directly with, even though they're a humongous company, they work with eh, smaller projects as well. These are some references that we started to look at at the beginning to inspire ourselves. And then we were able to start narrowing it down to the colors. So one thing that we really wanted to pursue was to have control and not just like be using whatever was available. They have more than 17,000 colors. So we went through a process of selecting our own colors that would reflect and work well with the project. And from those 17,000 colors, we came up with these six selections. The art piece is selected in the south, southern part of the project, where most or every user or every owner of the eh, eh, building will be able to drive by and pass by. And we received some feedback that of a concern of the color. This was not up to scale, this was an initial sketch about the concern of colors overlaying. I have some samples here in case you want to see them, but even if all eh, colors are overlaid, you're still going to get new colors. So the, one of the beauty of this sculpture is that it's constantly changing. Every time you pass by, you're going to see it from a different angle, and it's just going to project a new, different color. It's almost impossible, or it would be like winning the lottery, that somebody else in the world is also using these six same colors. And that's part of the magical thing that we want to, people to experience here, that from every angle, you get a different, a different experience. And also shadow and light also play into it. So every day of the year and every moment is going to be different. These are some quick renders that we did. It's not accurate, the landscape is not obviously how we want it to be, but just wanting to give you like an idea of the scale of the project. And this is the building as it's going to be. Again, these are not final renders, but it gets, it, it gives you a better idea of how it's going to look. And that's what I have for today, but if you have any other information, eh, questions, we have more backup information here.
Thank you, it looks beautiful. Councilmember McCormick.
It does, it looks, it's stunning. But you mentioned that the, the renderings or the pictures are not the current sculpture. What is, or I guess I'm confused then?
These are, I'm very, I'm a little bit of a perfectionist, but the landscape is not.
Okay, but, but, but what we're seeing, the sculpture, so, okay, no, I was a little confused, thank you.
Okay, so the design that we had in here was kind of a star, a fan thing? Is that what that is? Yes. Okay, just making sure. Yes. I love, I love that design. Now, and the colors, and I was one who wrote in, because I, I was really concerned about the ordering of the colors in this document here was different, and you, you were, when you were fanning them out, it was a different order than this. So the order is, the order is, here, I have it. Oh, maybe I don't have it here. I can open this slide, give me one second. Sure. Can you see here? Okay. So the order of the slide is going through the color spectrum. So if we go back to this original pattern, yellow go, orange goes after yellow, red goes after orange, green goes after red. But really, and I think this is my, what might have been confusing, is so this is accurate, but these drawings are, how can I explain? These are the 3D models, so they're not projecting the exact color, so they would. Right. Look. But you're confident that you're going to be able to get those, and when you mix them through, they'll be very, much more similar, because when you're holding on your hands, those were cool. So when I was, yeah, so when I was holding them in my hands, I was just trying to show that even, and this is, this was like three hours ago here in Lafayette. So even if I overlay all of them, this was pointing towards the tree, so what? Right. Shadow, you can still see my fingers behind them, so they're very translucent. Also, these are just like one on top of the other. Every glass piece is going to be about 12 to 18 inches away, so it's not exactly going to be the same effect. I just wanted to show that even if they are, which is never going to happen, tightly closed, one on top of the other, you still get a different shade of color. And so this was pointing upwards, this was pointing downwards. And this is just like I, I, the effect that it can project on the ground in certain areas. Sounds great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other, Councilmember Manderi?
I would just say, I was at the, the first meeting when you came to talk to the commission, and I will corroborate that, it was an incredible meeting. And I just really appreciated the interaction between the committee and the artist and the owner to end up with this, you know, much better artwork. So thank you very much. It was, it was great to see it in action. Are you still intending, because I think you mentioned at the first meeting, the, the colors that you use here are also going to be reflected on the individual units? Is that still?
Yes, so if I may, I'll add a couple details. There are six different colors, there are six condo units. Each condo unit is going to have in the wayfinding of the door, the main door. Each unit number is going to have one of those six colors. So part of the beauty of this sculpture is that secretly, it is also the idea of like six people different, living under the same roof and connected through the core. And at the same time, these are all human sizes. So for example, six foot six is the height of the developer. I am, I, my height is five foot six, and my son is three foot tall. So it's just the idea of a community living together and just creating something new when they collaborate and come together.
Very nice. All right. Well, staff is asking for a recommend, recommending to approve the public art proposal by artist Mariana Botero for Woodhaven. And so, ah, well, we can take, we can welcome public comment.
Vice Mayor Quoc, I have no speaker slips for persons in the community hall, and I have no hands raised, so I guess we have no public comment at this time.
All right, thank you.
So I'll move approval of the public art proposal. So I'll move approval of the public art proposal presented to us this evening by artist Mariana Botero for Woodhaven at 3742 Mount Diablo Boulevard.
And I will second, after seeing those little slides, I really appreciate that, that was very helpful, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your work, thank you. Good luck on the project, we look forward to seeing it. All right. So we are at item number 16 on the agenda, the council and commission reports. Does anybody like to report?
Just real briefly, as only know, on behalf of the stadium on the recycle smart board. And one of the things that they're working on is doing new franchise agreements for recycling our you know, kind of compost and garbage disposal. And last week, I went out and toured a couple of composting facilities in the Mantica area that they're considering they're gonna be bidding on, bid on the project. And we have a, it was inspiring to see what's going on, it happens at a big scale. We have a lot of education to do with our residents to keep bags and things out of the compost to really make sure the diversion rate is maximum. But it was quite interesting and fascinating to see how seriously, I mean, the board's taking it and really what we can do if it works together and just the amount that's that's kind of, you can really get back to the land, because all the, the result of the compost goes to the farms in the Central Valley. I mean, it's just phenomenal, this kind of a circle, so it was, it was good to see and we'll report back as we get closer to the new franchise agreements.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, I will report back on behalf of Councilmember Endury and myself, who are our liaisons to East Bay Mud. And that, as we all recall, the Lafayette Reservoir Tower has been a part of our discussions. And back in May 28th of this year, the council heard an update from our five-member citizens technical advisory committee expressing their concerns about East Bay Mud's approach to retrofitting the reservoir tower. And during that meeting, East Bay Mud representatives were also here and they spent time giving us a presentation that also restated their rationale for their approach. And as you may recall, we were at Lagerheads and we still are at Lagerheads. And therefore, we agreed to escalate the matter to the state, State of California regulator, the Division of Safety of Dams, DSOD. And we wanted them to hear the concerns of our community members in hopes that they may be able to assist with suggesting a path forward for us. So last Wednesday, August 7th, we met with DSOD in Sacramento in a session that lasted more than two hours. Lafayette was represented by our city manager, Narup Shivasta, Carl and Duri and myself, plus all five members of the Citizens Technical Advisory Committee. So the eight of us were there. East Bay Mud also had three representatives present and they were in listening mode only. We met with, I think, about five members of DSOD and the Citizens Technical Advisory Committee used that opportunity to walk through their major concerns and questions about the project. And we all heard the responses from DSOD. And despite DSOD managing 1,234 dams statewide, a very easy number to remember, 1, 2, 3, 4, that's how many dams they have to manage. The members that we were speaking to were actually very familiar with our dam, our Lafayette Reservoir retrofit project, because some of them, all of them have actually worked on it going back at least 15 to 30 years. So they had very specific knowledge about our project. So we were grateful for that with their familiarity. And it was a good opportunity to get clarifications from DSOD and for our community members to be heard, most importantly. This was a very technical conversation, so I'm not gonna try to even start on trying to summarize that. But as the next step, we, we are asking, Councilmember Endury and myself are asking staff to write a follow-up letter to the DSOD summarizing what we felt were the key takeaways from that meeting. We want DSOD to confirm the accuracy of our notes and our conclusions, which we will then share when, soon. But we would like to put this topic on a September agenda for the council so that we could bring it forward for ourselves and the community to discuss it more fully. But we've, I think the last eight or 10 weeks, there's been a lot of conversations going on and we're still at Lagerheads, but we've learned a lot in the process. And I would invite Councilmember Endury to chime in, nope?
Good job.
Thank you. All right, with that, no more comments? Yes.
I want to confirm that this matter will be placed on, I need the council's approval to place this on the, on the September agenda, one of the two meetings in September.
We have one recusal and
I approve.
We have an approval and from the other three, so we have a majority. Thank you.
Yes, the one thing I do want to say is it's amazing that all five of our technical advisory committee took the time to make the trip. And it's not just that they were there, they were very impressive when they were there. So I think DSOD understood that we have expertise, that there are alternatives. We'll give a fuller report about actually what DSOD can do if East Bay Mud doesn't want to do anything, but we'll save that for the September 9th.
All right. Thank you. So if there are no other council or commission reports, there are no other written communications, then we are? We are?
Public comment on that one?
Oh, public comment on council and commission reports.
And adding items to the agenda.
All right, do we have any public comments?
No public comments at this time, Vice Mayor Quoc.
Okay. All right, are we ready to adjourn? All right. Where adjourned?